Good evening, everyone, and welcome to Harrisburg City Council Legislative Session, April 14, 2015. I'm calling this meeting to order at 6:05 PM. Mr. Petrowski, please do the roll call.
Mr. Allott.
Present.
Mr. Baltimore.
Here.
Ms. Daniels.
Here.
Mr. Koplinsky.
Present.
Ms. Reed.
Here.
Ms. Wilson.
Here.
Ms. Williams.
Here. Thank you. Tonight, ladies and gentlemen, we have the distinguished honor to welcome Rajan Seth. He's the President of Universal Society of Hinduism. He will be doing our invocation tonight. Please welcome Mr. Seth.
Thank you. It is a historic moment of pride for the community when the prayers from ancient Sanskrit scriptures are being read in this great hall of democracy of this great city of Harrisburg. May we all rise, please?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you. Om Bhur Bhuvahasvahat Tatsavitru Varenyam Bhargo Devasya Dhimahi Diyo Yona Prachodhyat. We meditate on the transcendental glory of the deity supreme who is inside the heart of the earth, inside the life of the sky, and inside the soul of the heaven. May he stimulate and illuminate our minds. Astoma Sadgamya, Tamsoma Jyotirgamya, Mritya or Mamratam Gamya. Lead us from the unreal to the real. Lead us from darkness to light. Lead us from death to immortality. Niyatam Kuru Karma Thum Karma Jaya Ohaya Karma Na. Shri Raja Yatra Pichata Na Prasiddhi Edha Karma Na. Jagnartha At Karma Na On Yatra Lo Kujam Karma Bandhana. Tadartham Karma Kauntaya Mukta Sang Samajara. Fulfill all your duties. Action is better than inaction. Even to maintain your body, you are obliged to act. Selfish action imprisons the world. Act selflessly without any thought of personal profit. Tasmada Sakta Statham Karim Karma Samajara Sakto Haya Charan Karma Paramapunati Pursha Karma Nevahi Samsidhi Masita Janka Dea. Loka Sangrayaha Me Bapi Sampa Shankar Thumrahasi. Strive constantly to serve the welfare of the world. My devotion to selfless, one attains the supreme goal of life. Do your work with the welfare of others always in mind. Om Sahana Bhavatu Sahana Bhunaktu Sahaviren Karva Bahai. Jashvi Navadita Mastu Ma Vidhvisa Bahai. May we be protected together. May we be nourished together. May we work together with great vigor. May our study be enlightening. May no obstacle arise between us. Samneva Akuti Samnam Hirdhyaniva Samnam Astuvo Mano Yethava Soosahasti. United your resolve, united your hearts. May your spirits be at one that you may long together dwell in unity and conquered. Om Shanti, Shanti, Shanti. Peace, peace, peace be unto all. Om. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Seth, and may you have a safe journey back to your home. We are also going to have invocation by the council member, President Sandra Reed.
We'd like to take a moment of silence for the Betty Franklin family. We also like to take a moment of silence as April is Child Abuse Awareness Prevention Month. We want to make sure that we are supporting the thousands of children across the country that have been subjected to child abuse. We also would like to support the parents, grandparents, aunts, uncles, law enforcement officers, family support people, mental health advisors, and all those that work tirelessly behind the scenes to undo the harm that have come to these children. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Reed. Pledge of allegiance, Ms. Daniels.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving on to communications, we have none this evening. Moving on to courtesy of the floor, two minutes, please, to address any issues that you may have before the council. I am starting to my right. Anyone who would like to speak at the mic, please do so by coming to the mic at this
Good evening. My name is Mr. Boyd. I'm a community activist, and I guess I must say this a thousand times for us in this great city where 150 slaves were auctioned at the Broad Street Market. It is an affront to an African American that stands here that we will have a Hindu come, that we will not even take care of our own people, of this great city, that they will turn their back on the homeless and the needy and the ones that are in poverty. I ask this council once again that we would consider, once again, that we will have a place in your heart to help the homeless. If you can help the LGBT, and you will stand firm with them, and we will talk about the Constitution of the United States, we talk about equality and fairness. Before this organization, which is a nonprofit, came into existence, we had poor, we had homelessness in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania and also the city of Harrisburg. But it seems to be old news that even the people of our great city, white, black, Puerto Rican, Asian, that you will turn away and you will do these things, you will not even think about them. The honorable Mr. Baltimore.
Mr. -- let's not call names, Mr. Boyd.
Okay, well then, excuse me.
Mr. Baltimore.
Okay, well then, then, I will do this, then.
I will have you removed if you start naming council members. You are not going to harass and bash council members at this meeting anymore. I am telling you tonight, you are allowed to speak, but not harass council members or the administration. You have a right as a resident to speak your issue.
That's right.
But you will not point out and identify them or harass them.
Okay.
I will have you removed. Now, I'm warning you.
Okay, you can warn me.
Well, and I'm going to have --
I did not know about that.
Let's go, tonight.
I didn't know about that.
Remove, Mr. Boyd.
I did not know about that.
Thank you. You will no longer do that.
I did not know about that.
Well, now you're made aware of that.
Thank you, and I apologize to everyone for that.
My name is Nathan Soy, and I'm the Central Pennsylvania Harrisburg Area Director for Clean Water Action, the environmental organization, and my office is at 115 Pine Street here in Harrisburg. I'm speaking today on your Resolution Number 20 concerning oil trains. Our organization has over a million members nationwide, and we advocate for the public health and safety of our communities and the environment, polluter accountability, and the growth of a sustainable future through investment in clean, renewable, and resilient energy practices. I'm here today to commend Councilman Brad Koplinsky for his leadership and calling for the highest safety standards for crude by rail. Harrisburg City Council can pass the resolution urging Congress and the United States Department of Transportation to release specifications for tank car design and for all rail companies to rapidly upgrade and replace crude oil tank cars. It's a necessary action to raise the bar on oil train safety standards and protect Harrisburg's communities. Harrisburg can step forward in addressing the explosive growth of crude oil by rail in our communities. As many of us know, the devastating oil train derailment that destroyed La Mechanique, Quebec, and killed 47 people brought national attention to the dangers of the rushed expansion of crude by rail. Over the last 15 months, Clean Water Action has become increasingly concerned with the safety of communities as crude by rail traffic has steadily increased to 240,000 barrels per day, snaking through densely populated communities on questionable rail infrastructure. Chilling images of the James River on fire in Lynchburg, Virginia, a fireball outside of Castleton, North Dakota, and the leveling of La Mechanique, Quebec, and the explosion in West Virginia which destroyed a house and forced towns to shut off their drinking water intakes reminds us all.
Mr. Soy, are you almost done?
Yes, ma'am.
You're in the two-minute limitation.
Reminds us all of what is at stake. And as everyone here knows, Philadelphia had two oil train derailments pressing our luck. We encourage the passage of the resolution this evening. Thank you very much.
And thank you, sir. Next, please.
Good evening. My name is Robert Kennedy. My phone number is 877-9943. Chao, toi tan la, Robert Kennedy, toi to la, tam, bye bye, chen chen, boom, bye. I'm here today to talk about a little bit about some enrichment program. Thoi la de youtunay, lama program, enrichment. It is important that we support the program this year because we're looking at a lot of cultural diversity and working with the Parkland Recreation. We're going to take a special program uptown. We'll talk more about it. I won't say too much tonight. But we got a lot of diversity because I speak Vietnamese. I'm the only one in the program to speak Vietnamese. We have a lot of Vietnamese youth that's going to be part of our program this year. So I'm just going to ask the general public to support our program and support the diversity, and we're going to put more information about the special project program we're going to have uptown. I won't say a lot tonight because we've got a lot of people here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy.
Aldrian Rasheed, 2200 Block of North 7th Street. Good to see everyone again. First of all, I just wanted to say on behalf of all of the Shippensburg University students and myself who participated in the Black Lives Matter March and Rally that was held at the Pennsylvania State Capitol Building in March of this year, the students want to give a special thanks to Chief Carter, who was there as a speaker in the Capitol Rotunda, and that his words of wisdom were inspiring to the organizers and participants and community which attended, and that the point was really clear that violent crimes will no longer be tolerated and that a real need for early education for our youth is the right path to follow, that all lives, not just black, do matter. Secondly, for about, boy, it must be 15 years now, maybe 16, I've been a citizen code inspector with the city. And when the last administration folded, there's been sort of like a break in the activity because, for one reason or another, they pretty much disbanded, but I've still been active. So this past weekend, I wrote up, I think, six, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 6 properties, property maintenance complaint forms in the uptown area, 2 on Logan Street, 2 on 5th Street, and 1 on Camp Street for all sorts of violations, sanitation, plumbing, electrical, requests for demolition. Where I work at right now, I work 45 minutes away from here. I get up 2:30 in the morning, and it's hard for me to get back to turn these forms in. So I'm asking if I could give these to the clerk and you could push them up for me.
You certainly may, Mr. Rasheed. Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Next, please.
Good evening, Honorable Members of City Council. My name is Dan Lawson, President of Greater Harrisburg NAACP. And tonight, I'm down here to request something that I found out was requested November of last year. It's on human resources, to give the felons a second chance on jobs. And would you give each one of the councilmen a copy?
Please, excuse me. Give it to the city clerk. Thank you.
This is important because oftentimes, when you can't get a job, you have a tendency to do the same thing. It creates a revolving door, and it's my feeling. And of course, the mayor of Lancaster, this is his copy here. He has already done it. This is Blanding. Watson's the president of Lancaster, and he's informed me that out of town, April 1st?
April 1st passed.
April 1st, they passed it. And so, we're the capital city. It seems like if we're the capital city, we should all start acting like a capital city. And by the way, I'd be remiss if I didn't tell you how proud I am of you, chief. It'd be a different story if it went the other way. We'd be here criticizing you and ostracizing you. I salute you for where you're handling your department. Congratulations. Thank you.
Mr. Lawson, we will be having a meeting on that next Wednesday.
I'm sorry?
We will be having a meeting to address that issue, Ban the Box, next Wednesday.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Blanding Watson. As Stanley Lawson had indicated, I'm the president of Lancaster NAACP. Appreciate the opportunity to give some words and remarks to the City Council. It's timely that we focus and support this cause of ban the box, eliminating employment barriers for formerly incarcerated individuals in Harrisburg, Pennsylvania. The NAACP believes banning the box in Harrisburg, Pennsylvania is an essential ingredient toward a game changer for formerly incarcerated individuals and particularly the people who look to us for help. It allows formerly incarcerated people to participate, we believe, more freely and in other essential aspects of life such as education, healthcare, family governance, et cetera. This requires to move them to a higher standard towards middle-class families, a more holistic approach. We believe that banning the box will not only positively affect wage earners but will positively affect all stakeholders vested in Harrisburg, such as business owners, taxpayers, merchants, tax collectors, and all. Recent studies from the U.S. Department of Justice data shows that 70 million people in the United States who have an arrest or conviction history. We believe that this is a first step in redemption for many that are affected by the criminal justice system. These steps may also help the county tax base when formerly incarcerated people go to a job rather back to jail.
Are you almost done, Mr. Watson?
I'm sorry?
Could you please bring that to conclusion, Mr. Watson?
Sure, I can bring a...
And you can give us, you can leave a copy with our city clerk, and we make sure that all council members receive a copy.
All right. What's included also in this is the resolution from the National NAACP, too.
Okay, and we can make copies. Thank you, Mr. Watson.
Hello, I'm David Gash. I'm President of Harrisburg Region Central Labor Council, and I am Third Vice President of the NAACP. And I just wanted to thank you for considering this. I'm also a Catholic, and Pope Francis asked, he asked Catholics worldwide a couple months ago for the intentions for all Catholics to pray that people getting out of jail can find meaningful employment. And I think this is God's work, and it gives people in need a second chance. So, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Mr. Watson and Mr. Lawson, I invite you back here next Wednesday when we have the meeting regarding the ban of box. It will be, you know, 5:30. We're going to have a double meeting with Public Works, so I invite you back then. We're going to have a double meeting, Public Works and Administration Committee, which I sit on, and I invite you back next Wednesday at 5:30. We are going to address the issue, ban the box.
All right, good.
You're welcome.
Good evening. My name is Deborah Jackson. I'm an evangelist and founder of Evangelistic Outreach Ministry. I'm also a native. I'm also an advocate for mental health as well as homeless, and I just recently have been certified as a mentor for prison, for the Ex Offenders Program that's run by the group that meets at the Wesley AME Church on Fifth and Camp. And I sit, for the last several months, I've been sitting, listening to ex-offenders concerning their discharge plans, home plans, and support from family members and the community. And I really believe that support is much needed in the community. I've, back in 2004, as a mental health advocate, I founded a ministry, outreach ministry, CME, Mental Health Ministries. Each May is Mental Health Month, and each year we have been, oh, we were given a proclamation May 4th. Really, I'm being more, promoting more of an awareness that it's very important that the community come together and support homeless, mental health, as well as these ex-offenders. And on May, I mean, actually, Saturday, April 18, 2015, from 4 to 6, the Prison Action Committee will be holding, from the Christian Church United, CCU, they'll be holding their seventh annual Concert of Hope for prison ministry. Here's a flyer. Their theme is "Hope Transform the Hearts and Minds." So we would like to ask the committee for support as well as establishing the collaboration with CME, Mental Health Ministries, and the outreach projects here in Harrisburg. So however I could schedule some time to meet with the council, I would love to share my evidence of the need for support in this community, not just from the legislature or council, but also community as well.
Okay.
All right. Could I give you a flyer?
You most certainly can. And I also invite you back for the joint meeting on Wednesday at 5:30.
Thank you very much.
You may come at that time if you want to address the committee. You may do so at that time.
Thank you very much.
And please give the copy to, thank you.
My name's Howard Parker. I live at 3223 North 2nd Street. I'm also President of Riverside United Neighbors, and I would like to read to you a letter that we are sending to Police Chief Carter. In fact, if he's still here, I will hand deliver it.
He just walked out.
Howard figures, well, you know, we keep the non and nonprofit, but I'll buy a stamp.
Well, Mr. Baltimore is Chair of the Public Safety Committee. Mr. Parker, you could also...
Just pass it through to him, if I may. Dear Chief Carter, the Board of Directors of Riverside United Neighbors highly commends the men and women of the Harrisburg Police Department for the superlative manner in which they performed their duties during the recent incident in the Italian Lake area of our neighborhood. They demonstrated consummate professionalism, admirable restraint, and kept lives and safety of residents uppermost in their minds. The Harrisburg Police Department did us all proud. You and those under your command have our undying gratitude and highest respect. Sincerely, Howard Parker, President.
Thank you, Mr. Parker.
Good evening. My name's Doris Morelli. I also sit on the board of the NAACP. I also am employed with Tri-County Community Action. Just learning that there will be another meeting next week. Unfortunately, I'm not going to be able to attend because I will be at a training. So I'm here to support our cause here for that second chance. I along, I brought my father and my brother here today, so you could hear that. These are two gentlemen, as you see, they're a little older in their years. As you notice, they, too, were a part of the recidivism. They, too, were the ones that were always constantly going back and forth because they weren't able to make it, because they didn't have that second chance. So I'm proud that they're my family because they made me who I am and why I am standing here today. So I'm just asking for you to continue to support this cause because we definitely need this. We need to clean these streets and teach these kids that they have an opportunity, that the streets are not their homes. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Mr. Morelli.
My name is Johnny Morelli, and I just have a question. That meeting that you're speaking of on Wednesday, is that just open to the public?
Yes, it is, sir. Yes, it is, at 5:30.
All right, that's all I have.
Thank you. Anyone else to my right? Anyone in the middle?
Good evening, Council. I'm Maria Vargas from South 14th Street. I come here again because it's been a year that we've been dealing with the same coast. I know we're trying to move along and get that situation taken care of, but it's been over a year. And I've come here several times besides our meeting that we have private for residents. And I've discussed over and over about the situation of stop sign. We continue to have pretty much done nothing. The mayor has had the police out there one time. We have them sit at the barricades for two to three minutes one time. Nobody's going to run the stop sign while you sit there. We got to have an officer or somebody come up there at some point in time and sit back a little bit on South 14th Street where you can come on across from Mount Olive Church where you cannot be seen. Something needs to be done. We talk all the time how we need to get the residents involved. We need our citizens involved. But when you have somebody that comes continuously and asks you for help and we don't get nothing done, where do we lead to? This is how we lead to go the wrong direction, and people take things in hands and their matter. This is our children out here. And now with the street being paved, you have more children that's coming from the projects as well as our children that live on the street and want to play on the street since it has the light coating on it. So you have even more the children coming over. Something needs to be done. I mean, if we're not going to do anything about it, can we get some type of signs up for watching the children? I mean, because obviously the stop sign, they paying no mind. Is any way we get a temporary speed bump? Can we do a one-way street there? Something, something has to be done for our children's sake. I mean, it's ridiculous the speed that they come through there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Vargas. We certainly will address that issue. Anyone else in the middle? Anyone to my left?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name's Evelyn Hunt, and I live in the 1800 Block of State Street. Sunday, it was a beautiful day, but it wasn't a day that I could enjoy. We're having a problem in the 1800 Block of State, Walnut Street, 1700 Block of Walnut Street, 1900 Block of Walnut Street. There are a lot of young people who have these dirt bikes, and they are racing up and down the street, and they are also in the park well after dusk. I don't know where there is a spot where they can legally use these dirt bikes, but they should not be on Walnut Street, Apricot Alley, and 19th Street. In addition to the dirt bikes, we also had a group of motorcycle people up in the park this weekend, and they were taking the motorcycles down from one hill where the pavement was straight down to the next road. That was very dangerous, plus revving up those motorcycles wasn't something that I really wanted to hear. And I'd like for the police to patrol that area more often and see if they can deal with it, especially at 2 o'clock in the morning, 4 o'clock in the morning. I don't want to hear it. Thank you.
You're welcome. Ms. Hunt, I did speak with the chief today regarding that issue. He did have several patrol cars up there, but of course, they leave. But he said he will concentrate on that area in the next coming weeks.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else to my left? Moving on to the agenda. Moving on to approval of minutes. Approval of the Legislative Session Minutes of March 25, 2015. Are there any omissions, deletions, or corrections, council members? Hearing none, may I get a vote, please?
Sub move.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Minutes will stand as approved. Reports of committee. There was the joint combined meeting of the Community Economic Development by Chair Koplinsky and Chair Baltimore from Public Safety. Mr. Koplinsky will be giving the report tonight. Mr. Koplinsky, are you ready with your report?
I am.
Thank you.
On April 2, Community and Economic Development and Public Safety Committee had a joint hearing on the traveling of Bakken crude oil trains coming through the city of Harrisburg. We had representatives from organizations, Penn Environment, which talked about the environmental impact and the individuals that are in the half-mile evacuation zone, over 16,000 of them in the 17104 ZIP Code. We had a gentleman from TMI Alert talk about how the trains go within 1,000 feet of Three Mile Island, I'm sorry, 1,100 feet of Three Mile Island, and the concerns that may be put forth on that. So we heard from those individuals, talked about the potential concerns, but then we heard about how the state and the local community is getting prepared. Individual from the PUC, Public Utility Commission, came and talked about the inspection of the tracks. Sometimes when these trains derail, it's due to the tracks or it's due to how long the train is or how fast it's going. They talked about how they inspect the tracks, and out of the 5,500 miles of track in the state of Pennsylvania, they inspect 1,500 miles per year, and talked about signals and things of that nature. And then we had our own chief enter line from the fire department come and talk about how the city is working with Pima and the county... how the city is working with PIMA and the county emergency agencies to be prepared for these types of situations. Obviously, and he admitted that if a train were to derail and ignite in the middle of Harrisburg, it's going to be a significant problem, but he also set up a 747 hit City Hall, it's going to be a significant problem. But they talked about how if the fire were to burn, because Bakken crude oil is, burns more hot than any other kind of oil, that they would let it burn because of the environmental concerns of putting the different fire extinguishing combinations in there, that that would probably be worse for the land and the water, obviously, going down the Susquehanna River. We did not have a, folks from Norfolk Southern here, I was hoping to be able to hear from them as to how they can work better with our emergency management agencies and talk about how they can be better informed as they know when the trains are coming through the city and the area in general. We're looking to keep getting some, them on record, and may have another hearing if they agree to come to speak before council. That piece of legislation, Resolution 20, is going to be up for a vote tonight. On Monday, April 13th, the Community Development Committee had a session on Resolution 11 of 2015, which is a resolution approving the transfer of property from the city located at 28 through 36 North Cameron, so 28 North Cameron to 36 North Cameron, and 38 North Cameron and 40 North Cameron, to be transferred to the Harrisburg Redevelopment Authority. These are the buildings next door to Appalachian Brewing Company on Cameron Street. They are in disarray, they need to be demolished, the land needs to be remediated, and we talked about the cost of that, and particular grants that might be available to help do that. The cost is about $600,000, a little bit more than that for the remediation and demolition, but the Harrisburg Redevelopment Authority, because of the legal status that it is, has a better opportunity to get grants from the Commonwealth and other organizations. So, seemed to be a smart move to be able to transfer that from the city to the Redevelopment Authority at no cost, to be able to help plan that development for that property for the future. That is my report, Madam Vice President.
Thank you. We also had a committee meeting, joint committee meeting with Public Safety on April 2nd. Mr. Baltimore, are you ready for your report?
No, our meeting was combined, and I did the report, that was the back and...
Oh, that was the complete report, thank you. We'll now move on to ordinances first reading. Madam President? Moving on to ordinance for first reading, Bill 3, 2015. Mr. Petrowski, please read that into record.
Bill 3 of 2015 was moved by Ms. Williams, second by Ms. Daniels. It's an ordinance amending Chapter 2-509 of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Harrisburg to provide for the oversight of the uses of all Act 101 Host Municipality Funds.
That will be placed in Administration Committee. Moving on to Bill 4 of 2015.
Bill 4 of 2015 was moved by Ms. Daniels, second by Ms. Williams. It's an ordinance amending Chapter 11 of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Harrisburg on Blight, remediation to adopt Part 5, 11-501, providing for the imposition of certain fines related to corporate purchase and ownership of certain residential real property.
That will be placed in Building Housing Committee. Moving on to ordinance for amendment, we have none this evening. Ordinance for final passage, we have none. Moving on to resolutions. Resolution 20, 2015, please read that into record, Mr. Petrowski.
Resolution 20 of 2015 was moved by Mr. Kuplinsky, second by Ms. Williams. It's a resolution urging Congress and the United States Department of Transportation to review and update specifications for tank car design and regulations to lessen the number of oil train derailments, and for rail companies to rapidly upgrade and replace crude oil tank cars, and urging greater communication between the Pennsylvania Emergency Management Agency and local emergency management officials to better prepare for oil train accidents.
Mr. Kuplinsky, any questions or comments?
I do, I do have a comment. Again, this is the concern regarding Bakken crude oil trains coming through the city at the rate of 25 per week. This goes on top of federal efforts by Senator Bob Casey, and state efforts by Governor Wolf, writing the president regarding this issue. This is adding as a local effort, and I've encouraged other communities to pass similar legislation, to urge the Department of Transportation to shorten the trains, slow them down, potentially divert them from populous areas, and allow for the rapid upgrade of a safer tank car, because this particular type of oil, when it does, when a train does derail, it's more likely to rupture and explode. Also calls for the Pennsylvania Emergency Agency to work better with our emergency agencies in the county and city level, and to make sure that those within any evacuation zones have better information to be able to evacuate properly. I would urge that my colleagues support and vote for this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional questions or comments on this resolution? Hearing none, please call the vote, Mr. Petrowski.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Baltimore?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Kuplinsky?
Yes.
Ms. Reed?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yeah.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution 20 passes.
Thank you. Moving on to Resolution 11, 2015, please read that into record.
Resolution 11, 2015 was moved by Ms. Williams, second by Ms. Reed. It's a resolution approving the transfer of property located at 28 through 36 North Cameron Street and 38 through 40 North Cameron Street to the Harrisburg Redevelopment Authority for sale or other disposition related to planned business development along the Cameron Street corridor.
Any questions or comments, Mr. Kuplinsky?
No.
Any additional questions, comments, council members?
Yes, I will not be supporting this resolution primarily, not because it's not a good idea, it's not a good move. It's just, when we start transferring properties without a fair assessment, we should have a fair assessment value of the property before we start transferring it. Even though it's more like an internal transfer, I ask for a fair market assessment value of the property, so we at least know exactly what we're transferring, you know, so when you're passing resolutions to make a transfer, whether it's from here to another department within the city, we should still always have some basic information when we start doing these transfers. That's all I have.
Councilwoman Reed, I don't know if this would completely answer your concern, but I did not fail to, I failed to mention it, but I believe, Mr. Davis, $140,000 was the current appraisal of the land as is, meaning the land itself, after the building is knocked down essentially.
It was an appraisal in 2012 that gave the value to what the building's standing worth.
Okay.
So, they didn't take into consideration if you were to...
Can I, can I just stop you for a minute, please? Have a motion to suspend the rules, please.
So moved.
Thank you, first and a second. Mr. Davis, please come to the mic.
In answer to your question, there was an appraisal completed by the city, and it was in 2012, and it stated that for the purpose of that appraisal, we would look at the market value of comparable sales of similar buildings in similar condition in 2012. And at that time, they gave that a value of approximately $140,000. I think what we need to keep in mind is that whenever we talk about now demolishing the building and remediating any kind of environmental conditions, which by the way, that appraisal was conducted without an environmental assessment completed, that it then changes the scenario of the value of property today, because if we look at a pad-ready site, now we have to calculate in the cost of demolition and remediation, and then we end up with a negative value for the property today. So, the goal is, is to be able to apply for Commonwealth Industrial Sites Reuse Program funds, primarily for the environmental assessment, you know, and then to be able to identify also as much funds as we can for the demolition of the site. And that way, we can cover, try to cover as much cost as possible at the end of the process, that when we have a sale, there's a net proceeds that actually can return money back to the city of Harrisburg.
But do you have to date a fair assessment?
The only assessment that, of course, we didn't have ownership of the property, so I didn't order an appraisal. I did have someone begin to look at the property in anticipation of us taking title. So, we'll get an appraisal of the property once that's done.
And how long would that take?
Well, maybe four to six weeks. In any event, the proceeds from the eventual sale, the reviews, would come back to the city of Harrisburg to be reinvested into future neighborhood improvements, perhaps demolition, but that would be the city's choice of how we'd want to reprogram those funds.
Mr. Baltimore?
You said you're applying for a grant to get the property assessed environmentally, but do you have a ballpark figure of what the assessment might cost, the demolition might cost?
Yeah, we have, we have an idea that the, well, I've received a price for the initial Phase 1 environmental assessment, and that's $15,000.
For the assessment?
For the assessment. And then after that assessment, you determine if you need to do a Phase 2 assessment. That could add, excuse me, an additional $10,000 to $15,000 at the most.
Historically speaking, do we know what the former use of the property was? Do we know how much?
We have, we have an idea, we know what the records show us. I'm trying to remember exactly all the history, but I've been through the building, and it's very typical of your industrial activities that happen along Cameron Street, and sometimes activities that were not of the record also happened at those sites, which is why I like to have an environmental assessment to know, you know, what's there, when they discover, actually do some testing, and perhaps add even some boring into the foundation to see if there are some hidden, hidden underground storage tanks. Don't always catch them with that, but that is the method for doing your best before you start demolition. And then, we have an estimate from Wolfson Construction, the Redevelopment Authority in the city did not obtain that, that was obtained by Credi, about the same time as the appraisal in 2012, and Wolfson, with limited information, gave their estimate of over $600,000 for the demolition. I did notice that on that estimate, it did not specifically call out remediation, but because of that high number, I, and I did give them a call, they tried to capture as much as they could and be very conservative with their estimate, as if someone came back to them for a contract or to give a final price, they wouldn't make sure they weren't giving too low of an estimate on the demolition. So, that's where those numbers came from.
Questions? Are you done, Mr. Baltimore?
Yes, I'm done.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Reed?
The reason why I asked the questions is because I came in late yesterday at the meeting, and the meeting was almost over within 10 minutes, so it was a very short meeting. And your appraisal, and I understand the numbers that you're quoting, but we weren't provided any documentation of anything like, you know, what your proposals are, what your plans are, there wasn't anything for me to read except for the bill to remove, to transfer to the Harrisburg Redevelopment Authority, which brought up my question, is if we're transferring to the Redevelopment Authority and it's $600,000 in demolition that doesn't include remediation, and I understand that you're applying for the grants so that you can do the demolition and remediation, after all of that, I wanted to know what the fair assessment was, and if you had an appraisal in 2012, why that wasn't provided to us? If there was one already on file from 2012, because that's what I asked for last evening, is can I at least look at the appraisal from 2012? I wasn't asking you to go out and get a new appraisal, and then providing us the documentation, giving us an ideal on paper as to exactly what your intent is for this property going forward, because we're transferring it. My biggest concern, let's get to the bottom brass tacks of why I'm concerned, is that once we start transferring properties from Harrisburg to the Harrisburg Redevelopment Authority, which we know that this property's been sitting there for years and needs something done to it, we have a situation now with the Civil War Museum where they're paying, where they got the property for $1 per year, and we've also have the Capital Area Green Belt where they have a dollar a year for 100 years. I just don't want another opportunity, another situation, not opportunity, situation, whereas we take a property in a highly valued area, which is the Cameron Street corridor, and we end up transferring it over to whomever that would like to develop it, and they're basically getting the property not at a, because we're not doing it, it's not in the KOZ zone, it's not in tax abatement zone, but once you demolish the building, now your tax assessment is based on the land and not on the, not on the property itself, so whomever's going to purchase that and start to develop it, they're going to, they're going to purchase it at a discounted rate. And at the end of the day, I don't want the city to get into another one of those bad deals, whereas, you know, we're not getting all of the information upfront, and I thought that a fair assessment from the beginning, since we had one, wouldn't have been too much to ask for.
This is, this is a little bit different from those others, I maybe recognize that. As it stands today, you have an asset, the city has an asset that has a negative value of about $600,000. It was recently that city staff came to HRA and said, would you be willing to take this and take on the risk and to move this forward, just to get it moving forward off the dime? And so, at that time, between then and now, I didn't order any appraisals because I wanted to make sure I had my environmental assessments done, and to get some good contractors in there to be able to give us what I would think would be more sound pricing.
And the other issue I have with this is if you would have just transferred, if you would have just sold the property at what the fair market value was, and it's like if you buy a property as is, if the investor was willing to purchase the property, then the property could have been sold to the investor without the city having to come back, apply for grants, and there may be matching grants, and maybe a bunch of other steps that the city would have to do versus just going ahead and selling the property outright and allowing that investor to do whatever they wanted to do with it.
That was kind, that was very much the problem, though, is why the real estate wouldn't move, was because even though there was an appraisal of it as is at 140, the market wouldn't pay it, because nobody wanted to acquire that at $140,000 knowing at the same time that there was $600,000 of debt.
They'd take a loss.
If there was someone, I mean, if in the market there was someone that said, I can reuse that building, and I can make those numbers work, then we would have seen someone, the city would have seen someone come forward.
So, as it is, is though we're transferring it to the Redevelopment Authority, the city's still going to be on a hook for the demo, we're going to get the grants.
Okay, wait a minute, excuse me, everybody cannot speak at one time.
The Harrisburg Redevelopment Authority is still under...
Go ahead.
Still under the city.
They're an independent agency.
Yeah, let me be clear, if the Redevelopment Authority takes it, we're assuming all risk. It will no longer be in the name of the city of Harrisburg, it will then be titled to the Redevelopment Authority, and if it fails...
You take that, because you don't get the 20% of the value of the property.
We must assume all risk, we must insure the building after we take title, we must maintain the building, we must promote it, and we must find money to reposition it successfully.
Ms. Parker, do you want to add anything to that?
I wasn't able to attend last, last meeting.
It was a really short meeting. 5:40 they were done.
It's not true, we covered all of these points.
I understand you uncovered the points, I think you didn't do your job, I'm just saying it's a short meeting.
Brian's done a good job. What we found out when we took a look at that property, and again, as Brian was mentioning, is that there is a long history of marketing. We marketed it years ago, we had a real estate person, you know, try to promote it, and again, the private, you know, sectors are going to buy that building, they're not taking the risk of what is in there, the remediation, so the city is now owning it, and we, it's been there for years, and we really need to move it along. And the best way to do it is with the Redevelopment Authority, very similar to what they did on 17th Street for the Hamilton Health Center, the exact same thing, they cleaned it up, and now it's a valuable, you know, reusable...
It's on the tax route.
And that's normally what Redevelopment Authorities do, is they take that risk, and that's why I did call the state, we are working with them already, we're working with DCV, DDP, and they're very familiar with the property, and they're very interested in us.
I have a question, does this fall into the category of the KOZ or the Brownfield that had been set up over the last 15 years? Because we had two back-to-back, we had one in 2007, and then we had another one prior to that. So, is this property falling in that guidelines, because there was a whole stretch along Cameron Street all the way to Stilton that had been set up? So, go back and look at that, Brian, and find out whether that's a part of the Brownfield deal that was done in early, in earlier part of 2000, it was the Brownfield, where they got a 10-year exemption, okay? And then in 2007, we did the KOZ.
That's true.
And then we had another one that came back here in like 2010. We did, there were three of them that took place in the 2000s. So, see whether it was, Brownfield was the first one, you had one KOZ 1, and then you had KOZ 2. So, we need to find out where this property falls in that, because... Because if we clean it up and someone comes in and wants to invest and they're in that category, they do get an exemption of whatever's left over. We need to find out when it starts for them, if in fact it's actually falls inside of one of those three things. Because I had, I had, I did two of them. And the Brownfield was before I did the first two K O Zs that we took and knocked some stuff out of.
Wait a minute, are you done?
Yeah, go, go ahead.
Okay. Mr. Baltimore?
That area, I don't know if those, uh, enterprise zone, before the K O Z came in, it used to be part of the enterprise zone. It was a seven municipality. It was also an overlay with a K O Z, which was both sides of Cameron Street. So it, I don't know what the life of that, those zones are. But they were both in a K O Z and an E Z.
It is still an enterprise zone, but it doesn't title it as a property to have any, um, extra things right now. Maybe some tax, well, you know, the tax credits are probably, could be available if there was a developer who was interested in developing it. But it doesn't have any other remediation benefits to the enterprise zone.
But it is in a Brownfield, so it should qualify.
Well, the Brownfields, that's why I think D E P is very interested to help us. They said whatever we need to do the I S R P, which are familiar. They, they're very willing to have money and they're willing to help.
Okay, council members, uh, no additional questions. May I have a motion to go back to the session? Thank you. First and second, we're back in the session. Since there's no other additional questions or comments, please call the vote. Mr. Petrowski.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Baltimore?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Koplinsky?
Yes.
Ms. Reed?
No.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution eleven passes.
Thank you. Moving on to resolution twenty seven of two thousand fifteen.
Resolution twenty seven, two thousand fifteen, was moved by Ms. Williams, seconded by Ms. Daniels. It's a resolution approving the sale, donation, and surrender of certain unused personal property of the city.
That will be placed in administration committee. Moving on to resolution twenty eight of two thousand fifteen.
Resolution twenty eight of two thousand fifteen was moved by Ms. Williams, seconded by Ms. Daniels. It's a resolution appointing Mr. Bruce Weber, Director of the Department of Budget and Finance for the city of Harrisburg, to serve on the Dolphin County Tax Collection Committee, Delegate for the city of Harrisburg, and appointing Ms. Hillary Green, Purchasing Manager for the city of Harrisburg, to serve as the alternate delegate.
Council members, any questions or comments? Hearing none, please call the vote.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Baltimore?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Koplinsky?
Yes.
Ms. Reed?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution twenty eight passes.
Thank you. Moving on to resolution twenty nine, two thousand fifteen.
Resolution twenty nine of two thousand fifteen was moved by Ms. Williams, seconded by Ms. Daniels. It's a resolution confirming the mayoral appointment of Ms. Martha Rifflin, Esquire, to serve on, as a member of the Board of Directors for the Susquehanna Area Regional Airport Authority.
Any questions or comments, council members? Hearing none, please call the vote.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Baltimore?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Koplinsky?
Yes.
Ms. Reed?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution twenty nine passes.
Moving on to resolution thirty, two thousand fifteen.
Resolution thirty of two thousand fifteen was moved by Ms. Wilson, seconded by Ms. Daniels. It's a resolution authorizing the city of Harrisburg to apply for a grant for the Commonwealth's Department of Conservation and Natural Resources for the rehabilitation of five city playgrounds.
We have a motion to suspend the roof.
Some move.
Second place, second. Thank you. Who's representing the city administration? Ms. Wilson.
This is a grant that came to our attention just about four weeks ago from D C N R. And they are working with us on the five playgrounds that you could approve for the safety consultants to come in and, and take a look. Um, so this is the ongoing progress of those five playgrounds. The assessment that was done there indicated that, of course, as we know, that they're in bad shape. They need to be, you know, renovated or totally, you know, the playground equipment totally removed. And D C N R said to us, you know, said, look, you know, with the money that we gave you, they've already given us some money, but it's not gonna be enough. So there's a grant that's due pretty soon and we really think that you could, you know, you could apply for that. And if the D C B money that was given to us for these same playgrounds could be used as match, which is great. So we, we worked very quickly. We had to retain a consultant. And so we, we did that according to the application process by D C N R. They need some plans and budgets for those five playgrounds. So we retained, uh, Tom McLean Group. And they came in very quickly to help us do some renderings, to do some budget cost analysis because the, um, the playground applications due tomorrow.
Okay.
Good evening. My name is Tom McLean, landscape architect, President of McLean Associates, landscape architects and environmental scientist. As Jackie mentioned, we were retained by the city on, on very short notice, on a very short, short string, to put together concepts and budgets for five parks within the city of Harrisburg to assist them in completing an application and the requirements of the application for a D C N R grant. We were given a budget item of, a total budget item of three hundred fifty thousand dollars for each concept. And to average those expenses over all five parks to approximately seventy thousand dollars per park. That sounds a lot easier than it actually is. We based our work primarily on the Veleki report that was done, a recreation consultant who looked at the safety aspects of the park and accessibility, maintainability, and sustainability of each park. We concentrated our efforts on addressing number one hazardous priorities, which basically are, are flaws or discrepancies or detriments in the playground equipment itself that could cause deaths, serious injury, or, or dismemberment. So those are critical priority one hazards that needed to be dealt with. So we focused on those first. Secondly, we focused on the accessibility of the park for ADA requirements. So those were the two primary concerns. Thirdly, we looked at enhancements in terms of environmental enhancements, looking at how to handle stormwater in a more, in green infrastructure in that light. And tried to address all of the points that D C N R will look at in the application to make it as responsive as possible. So we have five parks, and please, if I talk fast, stop me and interrupt. Uh, five parks, Penn and Safer Park renovations, Royal Terrace, Norwood and Holly, Cloverly Heights, and Fourth and Dolphin Street. Of those, um, we have a total budget number of three hundred fifty thousand dollars for phase one. We have a va, a budget number of three hundred and eighty-three thousand, five hundred and fifty-six dollars for phase two, for a total project cost of phase one and two of seven hundred thirty-three thousand dollars, five hundred and fifty-six dollars. So the initial grant application is for three hundred fifty thousand dollars in phase one. So what we tried to do is we tried to break down these improvements so, number one, we could handle the hazardous issues. Number two, increase accessibility and engagement in the playground activities for as many individuals as possible. They were the two guiding principles. Thirdly, we looked at failing infrastructure and things that just, that had to be dealt with. So with that, uh, he's, I'm, you guys are from here, I'm not, so I won't spend too much time on the location of the parks. I'm sure you're all familiar with them. But these are the kind of concepts that we prepared. Uh, starting with Norwood and Holly. Part of the issues with this is, is accessibility, is very narrow streets and alleys. Currently, you have parking here and here. I guess I should talk a little bit about the layout of this plan first. This is our concept plan. These are some of the fight, uh, site information, project information that D C N R will require to be included in the application process. And these are our project goals. The first three are, as I already spoke of, the second, third, fourth, or fifth one are generally specific to this particular playground or park. So some of the issues we saw that even though there is handicap accessible parking spaces, there is not a handicap accessible route to the play activities, there is not a adequate number of ground activities. And this is pretty much, uh, common to all of these, all of these playgrounds. Uh, one of the big priority one, uh, hazards is the play equipment requires a fall safety surface underneath it. And although some of it is present, it's not at the depth and it's not of the quality and quantity that it needs to be. So that's a fairly easy item to address, not a big expensive item. But part of the problem associated with that is that we have edging and things like that that does not hold in and does not comply with ADA. We also have no subsurface drainage under these things, so they kind of turn into a bog. Uh, and mothers just don't want their kids on there because it's organic matter and it doesn't come off very easy. And it's not very appealing. So, uh, so we tried to address those in each area that we, that we could. The primary improvements to, to Norwood are new parking for ADA here, a new walkway that comes across the entire distance of the park, and new, um, new play equipment, and getting the right fall zones, correct fall zones around each area, and the right surfacing material underneath it. Uh, on these plans, text that is shown in white is phase one, text that is shown in yellow is phase two. I don't know how much you can see of that.
We, well, we certainly can. We certainly can see that. That's why we would preferably like to have something on a hard copy.
Uh, yeah, we were, actually, the ink is still wet on these.
Okay. Oh, okay, okay. Maybe you just want to bring it, Kevin, you just want to bring it by the.
Sit them in front of the desks there.
Yeah, send them in front of the desks. Thank you. Yeah, I think they're a little bit easier to see.
Okay, this is Fourth and Dolphin.
Looks nice.
Norwood and Holly, the total renovation phase there were, phase one were fifty-nine thousand, two hundred thirty-five dollars. Phase two were forty-three thousand, nine hundred fifty-eight dollars. For a total of phase one and two of a hundred and three dollars, a hundred three thousand dollars and one hundred ninety-three dollars. So with, with Fourth and Dolphin, we have proposed phase one of sixty-eight thousand, five hundred sixty-three dollars. Phase two of a hundred nine thousand, nine hundred seventy-one dollars, for a total of a hundred seventy-eight thousand, five hundred thirty-five dollars. Uh, this, this playground here has, uh, it's, it's fairly spacious and it looks like it gets a lot of use. It has areas up in front, as some of the trees are missing, some of the pavement, things like that. It has existing horseshoes, horseshoes and shuffleboard, has large timber walls. Probably like a foot by foot dimensional redwood timbers that you basically can't find them anymore. But a lot of them have deteriorated to the point that they're not safe. Uh, they have rebars protruding from them, things like that. But the park seems heavily used. So what we propose to do is, we have accessible parking here, we have an accessible route down here. But you can't get, uh, access, access to the play areas. So we propose to do a new sidewalk that would take advantage of the slope, wrap around like this and connect to that existing accessible use. We're also looking at removing all of these timbers and one of the upper playgrounds because it doesn't have enough of, uh, doesn't have enough M T A, ADA requirements, and it's almost impossible to get access to those. So, uh, we're looking at that being replaced in phase two, at taking this area up here that currently has a patio and sitting area, taking that out and creating a lawn area that can possibly use as an, uh, as a amphitheater. But one of our things that's a reoccurring theme in here is there's nothing quite as useful as a piece of lawn, as a useful piece of lawn that, you know, drains well, that has good grass on it, because you can be creative and you can do a lot of different things with it. So we try to get that, uh, in a maintainable fashion, uh, as much as possible. So that's what we programmed for up here. Um, what else? We're looking at re-surfacing, restriping the basketball court, putting the fencing up because the fencing is difficult in some cases with those retaining walls. We also have a long walkway here that's about, it's like ten feet wide. And it is, uh, has a series of timber steps in it. It's all broken up and a trip hazard, not accessible. So we're looking at taking that out and replacing that with accessible walkway as well. That is Fourth and Dolphin. Cloverly Heights? Our budget items for Cloverly are, um, thank you, Kevin, are seventy-nine thousand, five hundred six thousand dollars for the initial phase one. Eighty-eight thousand, uh, twenty-two dollars for phase two, for a total of a hundred sixty-seven thousand dollars. A hundred sixty-seven thousand, five hundred twenty-eight dollars, uh, total phase one and phase two. Uh, so this area here has a, has a fairly spacious lawn area up front, has a couple of spring toys and some other playground equipment up here. But it's, it's, it's not accessible. It doesn't meet all those previous deficiencies that I said it has here. It's also fairly close to the road in some cases, which is not good from a child's safety standpoint. So what we did here, because it does, it is a bigger park, we, we looked at trying to reuse as much as the existing asphalt surface as possible. Uh, the basketball court looks heavily used, and there's a multi-purpose court over here that we talked, could be restriped for, uh, for kickball, for just pickup games, things like that. It could be useful, has a backstop. We tried to utilize the existing pavilion, which is in fairly good shape, and organize the two future playgrounds around that pavilion. Uh, we incorporated some rain gardens for drainage and an ADA accessible route from the corners, uh, corners here. Let's see. That's it for, for Cloverly. We wanted to minimize our boards, so we used front and back there. Penn and Safer. Penn and Safer, we have a phase one budget of seventy-three thousand, eight hundred seventy-seven dollars. Uh, phase two of fifty thousand, seven, a hundred and sixty dollars, for a total cost of a hundred twenty-four thousand dollars, a hundred twenty-four thousand, six hundred thirty-seven dollars. This park is fairly flat, has a lot of old fences, uh, actually double fences with a knob in here where there's a city chain link fence, two or three feet behind that are wooden fences, private fences, things like that. So we looked at this, it's still, it's kind of disorganized and huge areas of this wood safety surfacing that just aren't maintainable. Uh, it doesn't drain well, uh, also has a extensive area of asphalt in here and a lot of timber. So basically, this whole front area here and part of this, uh, is asphalt here, and then all this wood park, or, uh, safety surfacing up here. So we tried to give this a, um, a meaningful use in sense of a new playground here to get a walkway that is ADA accessible with an ADA parking stall right here and ramp. And bringing in for phase one would be this loop right here and this play equipment, and then lawn in all other places. Phase two would include a newer swing set and a, and a walkway that wraps around it. And this lawn would be remaining here for open play. So we also have ideas about putting, uh, some colored slats on the back of the fences, try and add some liveliness to it. It has the potential to be a really nice park. Royal Terrace? Royal Terrace has a renovation, uh, first place budget of sixty-eight thousand, eight hundred seventeen dollars. Uh, phase two of ninety thousand, eight hundred thirty, forty-three dollars, for a total phase one and phase two of a hundred fifty-nine thousand, six hundred sixty-one dollars. Same project goals here. Um, we try to make this a more inviting place. It has, you know, State Street is through here, and I should say this about every park we were at. We only had about an hour or an hour plus at each site. Almost everywhere we were, when they saw us with clipboards and measuring tapes, people stopped and engaged us. And they wanted to see something happen. And they were very helpful in terms of telling us the kind of things that are going on there now and the kind of things that would facilitate that or, or add additional things to it. So we found just that little bit of time helpful. I think, Jackie, you guys did a survey online as well. And fortunately, while we were working on this, the survey backed up a lot of the things that we proposed. It's kind of like taking the cart before the horse, but it works, thankfully. So in here, um, it's a, it's narrow streets, townhouses and row homes up here. Uh, there's a, uh, basically a dead end here, uh, what we think is a city right away back through here. And, uh, right now, the bulk of this whole area in here is asphalt. This is lawn with some play equipment and then, uh, over here with, uh, some more play equipment. But it's stretched out. This whole thing is, um, is, is just basically all open. So what we tried to do, we tried to soften it up. We tried to give it a little bit of a gateway. We took away the asphalt from here, put in a more appealing, winding sidewalk through here, uh, provide an ADA accessibility. There's some concrete tables out there that I know from my age are from the seventies. Some of them not doing so well, but some of them amazingly durable. So, um, I, you know, some things like that, I just don't have the heart to say it's time to turn you, you know, turn you over here. Uh, so we're reusing those because they are durable and people seem to use them now, uh, to place here and here. We're trying to get, um, basically at all these concepts, viewing spots where the mothers can watch the children at different play equipments, different activities from a central location wherever we can. And make it hospitable for us. So, so we have two, uh, pieces of play equipment proposed for here. We have another split over here. And then we just have some earth mounds over here that can be easily mowed, just to provide, again, some lawn area. This slopes off a little bit. This seemed like a good idea, particularly with the fact that the swings and the mounds over here, that there's a nice panoramic view of the city. And, you know, when you're on a swing, that height being up high, that just adds to the, to the vertigo and the, and the excitement about it. Basketball court is heavily used. Some of the neighbors told us that in the summertime, they'll have tournaments and the mothers over here, they'll set up food and things like that and cook. So, uh, so it seems like with a little bit of improvement, it could really be, it could really be something. Did I cover everything?
Ms. Wilson, start with you with any questions?
I want to go through the, the costs on the different phases, if you would, please. You talked about the total actually being seven hundred thirty-three thousand, five hundred fifty-six dollars.
Correct.
And then you talked about, uh, phase one, which was three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I want, I want, Jackie, if you would, for the amount of, of the total cost. What does this grant encompass, phase one or phase two?
Okay, so, that's a good question.
Because I know we have two, we've also had other money that is being allocated to these playgrounds. So let's break out what's what, so we have a clear understanding.
D C B has given us one hundred and seventy-five. And D C N R has said that isn't enough, which we knew it wasn't. And so they, they said, apply for another one seventy-five, giving us the three fifty. And that first D C B piece is the match for this second, for this D C N R piece, which is, like I said, is great. So we don't have to put out the money. So we don't have to put out the money.
Okay.
What they asked for, this is why we had to retain a consultant, was they said, you gotta have plans, you gotta have what your costs are going to be and it should be an overall future. So you can do Phase One for the three fifty, but do some, you know, great planning, some long-term planning. So you can do the first phase with the three fifty, come back in next year, apply again for grants or if we had money, you know, whatever. But at least you can phase it in, you can say, three fifty will at least get us started. And then, you know, with the most emergency things, the safety issues and also the planning of the, you know, things like drainage, things like green space, things like, you know, that we should be looking towards for a complete park renovation. And so then we can come in next year and apply for the second. But the three fifty will at least cover Phase One for each of those parks. And that's what D C N R is recommending.
Okay. In Phase One, what are you actually doing though at the playgrounds?
Well, go ahead.
If you could get into some of the things that you're going to do for Phase One, I think it's important is to just, go ahead and answer the question and then I'll come back.
Okay, I'll start with this one. Again, I know you can't see it from there, but things that are colored in white are Phase One. So for Penn and Safer Park, it would be, the initial investment here would be for this circular sidewalk here. Everything else would be cleaned up, demolished and put into lawn. That would be Phase One.
Okay.
We have a really difficult time. Our challenge is to try and balance the improvements to things that are finished products and not have to go back in and work over new work or redo something and, you know, I mean, so. So we reused, we kept whatever we could, as long as it fit into a long-term plan. And that's why, for example, where the timber walls were, we looked at those, it's redwood, some of them are still good. We reused a little bit of it on-site, but you really, it's only going downhill. So what we tried to do is try to get accessible playground, accessible routes, get rid of, our first priority was those hazards, get rid of those hazards. And they could, like there's the primary hazards, number one, most dangerous ones. There are two and three levels of hazards. Some of those hazards would take the Parks Department literally years to try and resolve. There's things like using the wrong bolt, having things not put together correctly, things like that, that you would spend so much resources in trying to do that. Some of the equipment is out of date in terms that it no longer meets consumer product safety requirements. When the surfacing doesn't meet the A S T M fall zone requirements, things like that. So we had to deal with the fall zones everywhere. That was our primary goal because that's his list in that report is everywhere. Secondly, we had to look at the hazards that we could handle, the ages of play equipment. And then thirdly, we had to somehow get enough of money in there for accessible routes. Normally, in a park like this, municipalities don't like to invest in sites, they like to invest in playgrounds. They like to see equipment and bigger the better, the more colorful. Unfortunately, from our standpoint, the infrastructure is actually as important, if not more important. You have to be able to get there, you have to be able to maintain it. And we do things with infrastructure that gets double duty. This loop right here, for example, it's a great place, I mean, for a mother with a stroller, for someone in a wheelchair, for a kid trying to learn how to ride a bicycle or a kid on a big wheel. This is another event in itself, you know. So we try to get the most bang for the buck out of everything we did, but honestly, seventy thousand dollars does not go a long way in a park. So we try to do it as fairly as possible with all the parks and playgrounds and we try to put it where we got the most bang for the buck practically.
And there will still be, we're just applying now, so once we get awarded, which I'm hoping we will, you know, there'll be more time for public input as to what kinds of things you might like to say, to see there and more neighborhood input. But again, D C N R is asking for, you know, a professional, you know, what would you do with the site, what can you do? And what are those issues like accessibility, drainage, fall zones, all those kinds of things. That's part of the application.
Okay, so that's just Phase One. So the next year you'll apply to get the support that you need for Phase Two, which comes out to be three hundred eighty-three thousand, five hundred fifty-six dollars. I think he answered the question. The other question I had had to do with getting the neighborhood involved and asking them and it sounds like the neighbors got involved as soon as they saw the clipboards coming.
They did. And we also talked to D C N R about what we needed to do because they have a community involvement requirement as well for the funding. And because of the deadline, because of the need for the matching money and kind of to get the most bang for your buck out of it, we kind of did the process sideways. I won't say we did it backwards, but we did it sideways. And we cautioned Jackie and told, and she knows this going forward, you need that community involvement. If you don't get the involvement of the community, you may not be giving them what you want, they may be giving what they don't want and they have no stake in it. So we would ideally going forward with this, should they succeed in getting funded, is to have a meeting at every neighborhood park, that's the five neighborhood parks, and to make it publicized and invite people out hopefully on a Saturday or something like that when most people can attend and say, here's our plan. What do you think? It's just a plan. It's, we're not telling you what you need, we'll tell them why we did what we did, but you really need the community involvement to make it work, particularly at a neighborhood park level.
I guess I'm finished for now. Because I think I answered most of the questions as related to the cost.
Mr. Allott, do you have any questions?
No questions, but thanks for your detail on short notice, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Ms. Reed.
Thank you for your detail. Specifically to this Royal Terrace. There's a walkway in the back and I know you're going to have a community meeting in the future, but in all of the rest of the designs I'm looking at, there's pathways and you put a lot of effort. And I know specifically that the park is on a hill and it slopes down. But my main concern with especially that park is that when, because I grew up there and the only way for, I lived on, I lived on State Street. To get to the park, we had to walk down State Street Bridge. And the road, if you've been in the area, you know the access to the road is very narrow. Is there any way that you can put an access, you see where that green area is? So that, yeah, so that they can access it instead of coming out to the State Street Bridge so that they can go back out to Royal Terrace?
I did see that when I was out there. I mean, that's one of the things we look for is how do people get here? Several people walked through here, they were adults, coming to and from the city or work or something else, they were adults. We did see a lot of garbage up here, we saw a person here, seen have a lot of interest in their backyard and things like that, it was pretty nice. So if we could get the garbage cleaned up back here, get this into a maintainable state. I noticed there's a pathway coming down here and that's what I assume you're relating to.
There's a pathway that comes down here and there's also an opportunity to go from that park without having to go down to the bridge, straight across to Thirteenth Street also, because it's adjacent to the bridge. There could be a walkway straight from Thirteenth Street to the park.
Okay, is Thirteenth, is up here?
Thirteenth Street.
Yeah, I know there's, like I said, it looks like a vacant lot and we don't, we don't have a lot of property ownership. So even we just got some of that yesterday, I think, and tried to incorporate it. So it's really, it's a master plan, it's very preliminary. Those are the kind of things that we, we'd like to incorporate. And, you know, this is for, to establish a budget, to establish a plan that's acceptable to the state guidelines. It's open, in my opinion, it's malleable. What the neighborhood needs and what they can, we can afford to budget for them, that's what we should do.
What is your timeline when you're talking about, I know you're going to apply for your grants, but is this going to be Phase One? When you get your grants applied, when you apply for your grants, when do you anticipate getting the funding? And when do you anticipate completing Phase One?
Good evening, council members, my president, council members. I'd be happy to answer that question for you, Councilmember Reed. The grant application is due on Thursday, this Thursday here at four o'clock. Having submitted an application, we hope to hear something from D C N R early or late in summer. That's the expectation, summer. That means that the funds will be awarded sometime between September, early September, late September, so that work can start in October of this year. Hopefully, the work will be completed, assuming that we're awarded the money and I'm positive in that respect. The work will be completed come November for Phase One.
Okay, thank you. This one, work will start at all five playgrounds at the same time? The Phase One, is that Phase One for all five playgrounds at the same time?
That's a difficult question, I have to ask my president.
Are you just, well, so when you start in September, you're going to start at the, what, which one do we start with? Because they all won't be done by, Phase One won't be done for all five.
We haven't arrived there yet. The thing is that if we, depending on how we, the RFP is set up and put out and how many contractors or professionals are hired to erect the playgrounds, that could answer your question. And we haven't gotten there yet in terms of deciding what the strategy will be for that activity yet.
Okay, so my next question is that we don't have to match any money as of yet, right?
Correct.
Okay, okay. For Phase Two, do you think we'll have to match any money? You won't know that yet, to you?
Hopefully we can find some from D C E D and D C N R again.
Okay. Now, a question to you, sir. You said for Phase One, you're doing to clean up the hazardous and you're also doing sidewalks. Is that the extent of what you'd be doing under the Phase One?
No, some of the priorities under Phase One are also signage that identifies the park. Maybe a phone number, some of the contacts, should you have a problem or an issue. And also, some of the, one of the ringing things that reoccurs in that report is that you need to tell people about the hazards of a playground, that they need supervision. That's just like a legal requirement, but it's also very useful for concerned mothers. So it will be that, restriping existing basketball courts, things like that. Whatever, you know, basically trying to get new, updated, deal with the hazards, deal with accessibility and then whatever fringes we can add to that, add to that. You know, again, planning for the future, we're trying to get as much upfront as we can.
So the total playgrounds, Phase One and Two will not be finished complete until next year sometime? Okay.
Some will be more complete than others.
Okay.
I guess that's the best way to put it.
All right, thank you, Mr. Kuplinsky.
I don't have any questions, thank you, Mr. McLean.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Daniels?
Just one question, in the worst-case scenario of us getting the three fifty but never getting the money for the rest of the development, what do these playgrounds look like?
What do they look like?
Yeah, so what happens, I'm looking at the yellow
Right.
parts, what would those look like if they're not, what's there if there's no yellow? I guess that's the question.
So in yellow here, we have things like, we have a lookout here, a walkway that's made out of porous asphalt. That and the benches would not happen. We have an earth and play mound, those would not happen. We have a music system, benches and picnic table here. That may or may not happen, we're just trying to pinch pennies here, put in the second phase. We have a six-foot ADA path cut from existing asphalt, that's Phase Two. Forest paved asphalt, those are Phase Two. So what we try to do with basically with existing asphalt here is to cut that out to get this, get this root, okay? But it, so anywhere there would be the basic backbone would be there for access and safety, I guess is the best way I can put it. Let me try another example, maybe this one is the clearest example for you. This one here is very clear. Right now, it's a rectangular site, has a lot of back, board-on-board fencing and then a changeling fence around that, has a large tree here. This is all asphalt and it's not in any real useful geometry, like for basketball or for other things like that. It's there and I'm sure it's used for things, but it doesn't have any useful geometry. When you apply for straight grants, you have to do things within design standards. So a basketball court would have to ideally face the right direction, have to have the right dimensions to it, ninety by forty or whatever level of play you're encouraging to happen there. Same with baseball fields or anything else, they like to see a design standard because otherwise they really end up with putting in the money for things that don't work and that's not good for anybody. So in this park here, this loop walkway would happen here, this walkway here would be Phase Two, the swing would be Phase Two. And these are smaller elements here, one's a music hut and inchworm. So they're primarily for the preschoolers, the two- to five-year-olds, that would happen in Phase Two, it would be lawn in Phase One. So right here, you get this walkway, you get open lawn. But I think the bigger picture is there, is you get rid of all the things that's not safe and you get rid of the deteriorating things like the timbers and things like that, that really detract from the park.
So if Stage Two doesn't happen, we're really looking at more, I guess, surface areas that are soft, so lawn and
Lawn.
the other thing you mentioned.
Yeah, which is not a, you know, bad intermediate. But the other thing I have to say is that when you, you know, city's been successful with the D C E D grant. They've been, now if they're successful with this grant, they're getting a lot of encouragement. And one of the reasons for the encouragement is that you have safety hazards and you have ADA accessibility hazards. Those are things that they put a priority on funding. So I think from my experience with, and we have half a dozen of these going in by Thursday as well. But my experience with these, if you play by the rules, if you do intelligent planning and budgeting and you administer your grants correctly, that that's the kind of people they want to fund because they have a success rate. That's the kind of municipalities, counties or nonprofits that they give grants to. Because when you abide by their criteria, it's easy for them and there's no headaches in the end. Public gets what they're looking for, so.
Yeah, D C N, excuse me, D C N R has been very encouraging because we have been going along. We already have the Peer to Peer Grant, we already, you know, John Wilkie's been out here and, you know, through their funding. And so they're just kind of encouraging us and I'm, yeah, we can't say for sure if they'll give us more funding, but this, they know we're on the right path and they're very concerned about our safety issues, so they've been giving us money for that.
Mr. Barnard.
Yeah, excuse me if I get a charlie horse in the middle of my statement here, but.
I'll have electrolytes for you.
Two things, I don't know what the city's, well, first, let me congratulate the administration on its initiative, I think it's great. But is there, what's the city's position on grills at parks? Because these are neighborhood parks where people come to, you know, they're gathering spots. Do we have a position or policy against grills and?
Not that I'm aware of.
We do have grills. We do have grills in Austin playground.
Okay. Well, I know there's one, ones at Reservoir, but these are neighborhood, where people might picnic or just come down to the park and throw a burger or a dog on. It would be nice to have that option. And it's just a suggestion, the other suggestion is, as I'm kind of a baseball person and I know these are small parks, but where you have a wall that you might, you might, we used to play a game called wall ball where we would just go to wall, ball up against the wall and we'd receive grounders or we'd just pitch in a square or something like that. If at all possible, because, I mean, I don't want to get on a soapbox, but baseball is dying all over the country and it's dying for a lot of reasons, but I'd like to see if at all possible could we incorporate some balls like that or even a tennis wall with a fake net line, the kids might go up and develop those sports. We have basketball courts everywhere, everybody wants to be in the NBA and it's a false dream that we're promoting sometimes when we use all our space for basketball courts. I'd just like to see us diversify as much as possible our sports activities for our younger kids, particularly baseball, tennis options. And I know it's not a full-fledged baseball field, but there is, if you have a wall somewhere, there might be a space to throw a ball and throw grounders to yourself all day or try to get better at that.
Yeah, well, you're absolutely right, we didn't get baseball cards because of the size, but like for example, we did look at wiffle ball and kickball and there's a number of things you can do. So we were looking at the striping of the end ball here, this actually fence is existing and has a backstop.
Oh, that's good.
One of the people that stopped here and talked to us was talking about when he was a kid, how useful that thing was. So he, and he wants to be involved, he gave Kevin his number, he must be involved. So, yeah, we would like to do that. This is the only place I can say that we honestly looked and saw an opportunity to do that, so. But, you know, the grassy areas on the smaller parks, they can still be used for wiffle ball. That's the nice thing about grass and confinement and safe area, that you can do a lot of innovative things with it. You can do what you want to do with it, pretty much.
Well, if you have a bare wall anywhere, that's.
A bare wall.
If you have a bare wall anywhere, put a couple of stripes or blocks on it where a kid might be able to just throw it hard, like a cinder block wall if you have it in somewhere. If you don't.
I don't recall any. We looked at these things like the blitzkrieg, but yeah, I don't recall any wall that you could use.
Just wishful thinking.
These are side of our garage.
Okay, council members, any other questions? And we thank you, Mr. McLean.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Give us a demonstration.
I got lollipops, I'm moving like a lollipop.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. May I have a motion to go back into session?
So moved.
Thank you, first and a second, we're moving back into session. Since there's no other questions or comments, please call the vote, please, for Resolution Thirty.
Mr. Allott?
Yes.
Mr. Baltimore?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Kuplinsky?
Yes.
Ms. Reed?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution Thirty passes.
Moving on to Resolution Thirty-One, two thousand fifteen, please read it under your record.
Resolution Thirty-One of two thousand fifteen was moved by Ms. Wilson, seconded by Ms. Daniels. It's a resolution approving the lease agreement and memorandum.
Mr. Kennedy. Mr. Kennedy. We are trying to continue our agenda, please, thank you.
Resolution Thirty-One of two thousand fifteen is moved by Ms. Williams, seconded by Ms. Daniels. It's a resolution approving the lease agreement, memorandum of lease agreement, the forms of which are attached here too, as Exhibit A, together, the lease between Harrisburg Parking Authority and Lesser, the parking authority, and Selco Partnership Doing Business as Verizon Wireless as Lessee, Verizon for installation, operation and maintenance of communication antennas, related equipment on the city island parking garage and authorizing and directing the execution of delivery of the lease by the city of Harrisburg as owner and the land upon which the city island parking garage is constructed where the city.
Let me place the administration committee. Moving on to Resolution Thirty-Two of two thousand fifteen.
Resolution Thirty-Two of two thousand fifteen was moved by Mr. Baltimore, seconded by Ms. Daniels. Resolution 32 of 2015 was moved by this, Mr. Baltimore, second by Ms. Daniels. It's a resolution ratifying a professional services agreement with Everbridge Incorporated for software system for disseminating emergency and non-emergency electronic notifications to city residents.
Place them in public safety committee. Moving on to Resolution 33, 2015.
Resolution 33 of 2015 was moved by Ms. Williams, second by Ms. Daniels. It's a resolution approving the consulting service agreement with Brian K. Wade, the contractor to develop program sales, station sponsorship, and grants for the city's television station, W H B G TV 20, or TV 20.
Let me place the administration committee. Moving on to Resolution 34.
Resolution 34 of 2015 was moved by Ms. Williams, second by Ms. Daniels. It's a resolution opposing any increase in truck size or weight.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, please call the vote.
Mr. Allen?
I'm sorry.
Yes.
Mr. Baltimore?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Kuplinsky?
Yes.
Ms. Reed?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yeah.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution 34 passes.
Moving on to Resolution 35 of 2015.
Resolution 35 of 2015 was moved by Ms. Williams, second by Ms. Daniels. It's a resolution requesting the Pennsylvania Historic Museum commission to adopt regulation permitting counties and municipalities to use digital media to retain permanent records to draft regulations that are similar to those approved by National Archives and Records Administration, or N R A, N A R A, eliminate the requirement for counties and municipalities to use both microfilm and digital media for document retention and update the regulations pertaining to retention of certain permanent records.
Questions or comments? Please call the vote.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Baltimore?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Kuplinsky?
Yes.
Ms. Reed?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yeah.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution 35 passes.
Moving on to Resolution 36 of 2015.
Resolution 36 of 2015 was moved by Ms. Reed, second by Ms. Daniels. It's a resolution ratifying the submission of a Pennsylvania State Clean Diesel Grant Program project application to the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection to facilitate a project that will decrease submission from diesel-powered waste disposal trucks in the City of Harrisburg Public Works Department, or Public Works Diesel Fleet, and create a demand for a compressed natural gas C N G to refuel clean engine technologies.
Let me place the public works committee. Moving on to Resolution 37 of 2015.
Resolution 37 of 2015 was moved by Ms. Wilson, second by Ms. Daniels. It's a resolution ratifying the submission of a grant application to Highmark Blue Shield for $100,000 to use towards the Parks and Recreation Enrichment Summer and After School Program.
Let me place the Parks and Recreation Enrichment Committee. Moving on to Resolution 38 of 2015.
Resolution 38 of 2015 was moved by Ms. Williams, second by Ms. Daniels. It's a resolution ratifying a custom price, pricing agreement with Guttman Energy for the generation of electricity for certain properties and accounts.
Let me place the administration committee. Moving on to Resolution 39 of 2015.
Resolution 39 of 2015 was moved by Mr. Allen, second by Ms. Daniels. It's a resolution approving the second proposed 2015 budget reallocation.
And that will be placed in Budget and Finance Committee. Moving on to Resolution 40 of 2015.
Resolution 40 of 2015 was moved by Ms. Wilson, second by Ms. Daniels. It's a resolution dedicating the city-owned parcels along South Cameron Street property, which includes approximately .6 miles of the Capital Area Green Belt Trail, Green Belt Corridor, as public open space for recreation and a component of the public park lands of the City of Harrisburg, and to authorize a cooperative agreement with Dolphin County and Capital Area Green Belt Association to seek state and/or federal funding for construction of permanent all-weather trail surface on the property, and to maintain such improvements.
We have a motion to suspend the rules, please.
So move.
We have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Doug?
Yes, we need to amend the cap, the caption on this, so.
Are we just amending the caption?
Yes.
Okay. Council members, are there any other questions? We're just going to amend the caption.
I want to make a motion to amend the caption
Okay.
for Resolution 40, as follows. So a resolution dedicating for continuous public use certain parcels of land along South Cameron Street property titled to the City of Harrisburg, and bearing an existing informal designation as portions of the Capital Area Green Belt, consisting of approximately .6 miles Green Belt path along the corridor, committing the same for public open space for recreational use, and further authorizing a cooperative agreement with Dolphin County and the Capital Area Green Belt Association to seek state and/or federal funding for construction of a permanent all-weather trail surface on the property, and to maintain such improvements.
Questions or comments on the amendment?
A second, I'll second the amendment.
Oh, I'm sorry, a second. Okay, I'm sorry. Now, is there any questions or comments on the amendment? Hearing none, please call the vote.
Nope, back in session.
No, we're
Oh, I guess I should.
I had a question on the resolution, so.
You have a question? Okay.
I wanted to know how much the grant you're applying for.
You can sit here.
Trying to bed, trying to get out of here. I'm freezing. Make the foot track.
They do have a handout that... We are applying for $208,050 to pay that section of the green belt on the city-owned property, approximately from Elliot Street to Shinway Street. The map on the back here shows the red stripe along Cameron Street. This is primarily an old abandoned railroad building.
So you're planning on paving that, okay.
Is this right, right on camera, on camera?
It's right off.
Right below?
Yes, right.
Right above Angst Tempor.
A little path, a little gravel path there.
And then you're going to repave, looks like you're throwing up right behind Pendote across the railroad.
These are, the Cameron Street section would be one part, before part improvement. This is a grant that would be submitted by Dolphin County.
Okay.
The total amount of the total grant is $480,000. It's a D C N R grant proposal.
So it's $480,000 grant, and 208 is just for this, is it the one section or the two sections highlighted?
The one section along Cameron Street.
And that's what we're concerned, is the city.
South Cameron.
That's correct, because that's on city property.
The other parcel in South, South Harrisburg is, is owned by the Dolphin County Authority. It's where the Pendote building is.
Well, that's not the same?
That's about $1,200, $1,200 feet of trail there. The other, the other sections that we're looking to repave are between P A 441 and 32nd and Paxton Street, and near the Rutherford House.
Out of this $480,000, how, we're applying for a grant for $280,000?
$280,000.
You're not applying for it.
You're not applying for it.
The county, the county has agreed. Our association's been working with Dolphin County Parks and Recreation the last three or four years
Okay.
to raise monies for various improvements along the Green Belt. They have worked about some of these. Some of them are for improvements at intersections, where there'd be crosswalks and lights and things like that. We're in the fortunate situation that we were so successful in getting federal funding with the Belt Proposals, that D C N R has agreed to use a portion of that federal funding that we received as a match for this program, for this grant proposal. So the city stands to get $208,000 for improvements within the city, on city property, without any match.
Okay.
And the county's agreed to administer the grant.
In other words, Supreme Belt Association has done all the heavy lifting to get what's needed and required to support the program, so this is pretty easy. It's just us, it's, it's really a formality to ensure that that space is contained and maintained by the city, and giving you authorization to move forward with the
We started on this in 1995.
Yeah, I understand.
Re-decorated Rutherford, cleaned out the, this was, this was full brush 20 years ago.
Sure, I know, yeah, I know where it's at.
And, you know, it's very serviceable now, it's a connection between Cameron Parkway and the low-income areas of the hill.
Yeah.
And we're going to be approving that Cameron Street intersection right there with a, with a crossing light there, it's going to be a pedestrian-controlled light. This is going to make a continuous, a canon pathway up through this area. This particular area is where we get hard during, it was a tropical storm, Lee, like three years ago.
Where washed everything.
Right.
Yeah, what happens is, I guess you know what, it, it backs up from Paxton Creek, and then when it comes, when it, when it recedes, it really gets into this abandoned corridor. So that, that's our proposal tonight, and...
And you're asking the city to maintain it for you?
Say that again.
Will the city be responsible for maintaining this area?
Well, the cooperative agreement that we, we propose of this, is that the Green Belt is going to continue its 20, 20-year history of maintenance.
Okay.
You know, ultimately, it is city property, and ultimate, ultimate maintenance and ownership is understate of the city.
All right.
The city was intending to enter into some type of understanding with the Green Belt, that they would maintain the improvements.
But we don't have that resolution as of yet, is that what you're saying?
That's correct. That would come after, after the fact.
Okay, okay.
Once the, once the grant is awarded, and once they, they construct the improvements.
Okay. Any other questions or comments, council members?
Yeah.
Mr. Baltimore?
Just want to thank you for the Green Belt. My brother and I ride bikes on that, we've done that for several years, but my sons and I, last year, we walked that Green Belt. Started out as a real fun trip, we started like 5:30, ran it. By the time we got to about 17 or 18 miles, we weren't laughing and smiling, we were hurting.
Fun to ride.
But it is, we saw so many things, deer, turtles, birds of all kinds, but it's just a beautiful asset, and I, I thank you for all the volunteer work that goes on. We had some scouts do some volunteer work a few years back, too, but I just want to thank you for all the work you're doing with the Green Belt. It's a great asset, isn't it?
Well, thank you very much. It's, the number we are using is, I know for the last three or four years, we've been averaging 6,000 hours of service, and twice a week, we cooperate with Dolphin County Juvenile Probation, and have kids out there working on the Green Belt Trail, and also with the Diakonia Wilderness Center, brings kids to us. And these are troubled kids, they've been adjudicated, and we have some older volunteers who are just wonderful with these kids.
I would imagine that would be like punishment to them, not when they're doing that work.
It's just, it's, 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 it's,